All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, our first item is to administer the oath of office, and I'm going to ask Reverend Mathias to administer the oath of office to our four either new or really re-elected board members.
So if we can stand here.
Is he out there? Is that why Tony had moved? That's the only thing I could think of.
They're gonna get the back of your head.
You stand to the side, cameras are there.
That's good, that's good.
Okay. So, Reverend Mathias, repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Grand Rapids Public Schools. In Grand Rapids, Michigan. According to the Fast Track Act. Welcome to Grand Rapids.
Yeah, all right. Very nice.
Absolutely. Well, you know, it is the will of the people.
Welcome. Welcome aboard. All right, next we need to have a nomination for a temporary chairperson for election of our officers.
I would like to nominate Dr. Baker for temporary chairperson.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, I will act as the temporary chairperson and ask, and also my first duty will be to appoint Reverend Mathias to be our temporary secretary, who I'll ask, are there any nominations for offices?
We do, we have three nominations.
Four?
Oh, four, I'm sorry.
Four nominations.
Four nominations. Dr. Wendy Fobbe as the next president of the Board of Education of Grand Rapids Public Schools. Also nominated is Reynard Ross to continue in his role as Vice President of the Board for the year 2017. And also accept the nomination of Dr. Toni Baker as Treasurer of the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education. And then also nominated is Ms. Jen Shaki for Secretary.
Are there any other nominations? People can bring nominations forward at this time for any of the offices? If not, can I get a motion to vote on the entire slate?
So move.
Support. Support, so can you call the roll?
Okay. Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Fobbe?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, well, we have a new slate, so Dr. Fobbe is our new president.
Good job.
I think I get to move over.
Secretary is the hardest job.
Thank you.
Okay.
Here you are. Well, we have no student representatives this evening, so we would move on to public comment for board agenda items. I believe there's none. There is none, thank you. So, Secretary's report.
Yes, hold on.
All right, here we go.
You gotta get on this.
I know, I know. Just a little bit of grace is all I'm asking for. All right, well, to my fellow board members, we have two invitations this evening that I'd like you to be aware of. The first is that we have been invited to the Grand Rapids Urban League, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Corporate Breakfast. That will be held on January 16, that's a Monday, at 7:00 a.m. at DeVos Place. And this year's theme is, "Where Do We Go From Here", based on Dr. King's fourth and final book, and the table's been reserved for the board. Additionally, we've been invited to the Giants Award. This is the 35th Annual Giants Award and Banquet to honor and celebrate African-American individuals and/or organizations that are recognized for their exceptional contributions shaping the history and quality of life of greater Grand Rapids. This event is on Saturday, February 4, at 6:00 p.m., also at DeVos Place. So if you can attend, please let Julie or anybody in central office know.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask John Hemholt to come forward, please.
Superintendent Weather O'Neill, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm here tonight to share a resolution to honor the service that you all have as school board members in the state of Michigan here in the city of Grand Rapids. We've prepared a resolution that I'm gonna read for you. "School Board Member Recognition Month, January 2017, whereas the Governor of the State of Michigan has declared the observance of January 2017 as School Board Member Recognition Month, and whereas Grand Rapids Public School Board Members represent a tremendous resource as local decision-makers who consistently respond to the needs of their community, and whereas Grand Rapids Public School Board Members represent the voice of this community in serving the interests of our schoolchildren in preparing them for the future, and whereas Grand Rapids Public School Board Members continually strive for improvement and progress in education with an understanding of the need for commitment to change and growth, and whereas the men and women elected by the people as members of the Grand Rapids School Board deserve recognition for countless hours of public service to public education in our community. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Teresa Weather O'Neill, Superintendent of the Grand Rapids Public Schools, do hereby declare January 2017 as School Board Member Recognition Month in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. I commend the members of the Grand Rapids School Board for their dedicated service to the children of this community and urge all citizens to join me in demonstrating gratitude for these outstanding individuals. Be it further resolved that the student representative to the Board also be recognized for the dedication and service to the Board in providing input on a wide variety of student issues in the district. Be it further resolved that this resolution is recorded in the proceedings of the Board and a copy be placed on file. Signed, Teresa Weather O'Neill, Superintendent, Grand Rapids Public Schools."
Thank you, congratulations.
We have one action item on tonight's agenda, and that is to approve our board meeting schedule. You all received that in your packet. May I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Support.
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Shaki, can you please take the vote?
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Fobbe?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis? Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Approved, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Support.
Keep making motion.
All in, please take the vote.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Fobbe?
Question.
Dr. Flores, if you want to make a motion to approve it, pulling the student reinstatement, is that what?
Yeah, we had discussed this, or at least my request to separate the student reinstatement from the consent agenda, if that would be possible. I know that you have proceeded to engage in a vote, but...
It's okay, I can re-request my motion. So, I make a motion that, for the, actually, it was your motion. Consider the agenda group and minus the student reinstatement.
Minus the reinstatement, sir.
Okay, I support that.
Very good, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Fobbe?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Thank you, do I have a motion for approval of the student reinstatement?
Motion for the student reinstatement.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, support. Thank you. Discussion. Dr. Flores?
Yeah, for what it's worth, and in my perspective as a teacher, over 30 years in this district, or an employee of the district at that point, or that longevity, I believe again that our process for reinstatement really ought to be scrutinized more than it is, and that we should, in fact, secure the safety of all of our employees, and that when an infraction rises to the level of an assault of our staff members, I don't care whether it's a teacher, or a cafeteria worker, or a custodian, or our superintendent, or the chief of our security, or, God forsake, a board member visiting our schools. But I think that that severity of an infraction of discipline, really, we need to rethink whether we send students back to a school after, you know, five counseling sessions and an apology and whatnot. I just think that it sends a wrong message to the public who expect from our schools a culture of academic pursuit and the respect for authority. And so I will respectfully vote against this reinstatement.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, if there's no other comment, we take the vote.
I'd like to make a comment that, again, I think that we have a process that the board has spent time. We have board members at the reinstatement hearings. Conditions are met, and this is not a place where people are out for good, that this is a place that people can learn to become students. And we are working with children. I think that, with that said, I do not think that there's evidence that this is causing harm to staff.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
I can make a comment, too. I've sat on a number of these now with my colleagues on the board, and we spend a lot of time going through the incident, what happened since, what things have happened with that student, how they feel, they are there, the parent is with them, and we go through a very arduous discussion. It usually goes at least an hour or more. And we talk to the student, we talk to the parent, we talk to the staff, the staff is there. And so I think, and these are students who need to have an opportunity to go to school. And if they've been out for a year, which many of them have been, that's a long time for a young person to be out of school and just falling behind. And so we give it a lot of thought, a lot of consideration, and so I think that we need to reinstate these students after a year. I don't like a year, but that's personally mine.
Mr. Ross, you'd comment?
Yeah, I guess I just wanna get some clarification from Dr. Flores. Is it just thinking right now that students who have committed an assault, for the most part, in no circumstances, they'd be going back to the same school?
I don't think that they should return to the same school where the incident occurred. I just think that it sends a wrong message. You know, certainly students need to have a second chance. I'm not opposed to a second chance. What, I think it sends a message to our staff that our schools lack discipline, that lack consequences, and that it is for that reason that there is a movement across the country to push back on the new movement toward restorative justice and having students return to the classroom without having any consequences being administered or any punishment administered to them for the infractions against authority and respect. And something as severe as an assault, I think you really have to focus in on that. As severe as an assault, and we don't know whether that was just a slap on the face or a punch in the eye, or a kick in the teeth. The issue is, it's an assault, and if it rose to that level of severity with discipline, and there were consequences, obviously, and granted, a young person, young minds, and all those things considered. But when we send that student back to the classroom where the infraction happened, I really think that the majority of our staff in the field, on the front line, if you will, if I could use those terms, really would disagree with this. But, you know, minds is one opinion, but it is consistent, because we have had to reinstate students with this severe of infraction before, and with other, more severe, I think, you know, bringing weapons to school. And that message, it does resonate. You know, my message, my opinion on it, does resonate with a great number of people that I've had feedback from in our community. And so I'll continue to be consistent and vote against this reinstatement for those reasons. Not saying that he shouldn't return to a school in our district, or a program that is appropriate, but whoever that student is, you know, really ought to be in a different school, a different environment, with an opportunity to succeed.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Reverend Mathias, did you have comment?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, too, in your opinion, then, are you thinking that our reinstatement process needs to be looked at or studied again, or what do you?
You know, I respect the people who made the decision. It is just not a decision that I support.
There are no other comment, can we take the vote?
I have one other comment. Generally, we have staff from that school there, and so we tend not to send them back to the same school unless that's okay with the sending school. So I just want you to know that, I don't know if you've sat in on any of them, but we rarely send them back to the same school, only if the staff is present.
Thank you, Ms. Slade.
And if I may also comment, there has been, in terms of the opinion of the board sitting on these reinstatement proceedings, that sometimes the recommendation is that they be reinstated, but go to a different school. So, those are all options. When we, as board members, all get to sit on that reinstatement committee, can make those recommendations, given, you know, a particular case and a situation as it's scrutinized. So I do think that all those options are there when folks are sitting at the table, including, you know, the parent themselves and the student, too, has to answer for their actions as well, so...
Thank you.
I have another comment. So, yeah, I will be voting yes for this reinstatement, but I do think Dr. Flores has a point from the standpoint of decisions made at the board table and how they may affect school climate. I think, you know, under the leadership of the superintendent, the district has made some excellent strides, and I think personally, the next step is a climate sort of improvement to make sure that all students have a greater opportunity to be successful academically. So to his point, though, I think there is something to be said sometimes where, okay, we do have students who can really impact the environment for everyone. And if a student has committed an assault, that student may be one that impacts the environment for everyone. I'm not ready to say that it should just be as cut and dry as Dr. Flores says, but I do think it may be worth us getting some more understanding of the process.
All right.
Go ahead.
I could just have to make this comment in terms of board members' role and responsibility. My understanding is the role in board governance. It is not our role to adjudicate these reinstatements. It is our role to be present to them, that we need to ensure that due process is followed, and that it's well, and that it is not our role to adjudicate them. So, we're going to have a more extensive discussion about board member role in relationship to reinstatement. It's very complicated when we need to be present to something, but we are not there to adjudicate or make the decision. So, hopefully, we will have a very robust discussion trying to understand what our role is in relationship to reinstatements. But this is probably a good prelude to that discussion, so...
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think that board members have been participating in these reinstatement hearings. Board members have been very impressed with the thoroughness, their ability to discuss. And I have heard no board members participating in these reinstatement hearings. And as Dr. Fobbe was alluding to, that's our role, you know? And I think that we'd have to see by seeing that there's a problem. And there's speculation of hypothetical ideas about what problems might be, but we haven't expressed any, and board members that have participated. And I think that at this point, to question publicly the procedures of the Grand Rapids Public Schools without any knowledge of whether or not there's a problem. And in fact, counter to that, lots of people involved in the process and support it. So, I think it needs to be said.
Went into that, though, I guess I will say I haven't had an opportunity to participate in the hearing, so I think I, for one, might benefit from, and maybe other newly-elected folks, with a greater understanding of simply what the process is. And from that understanding, maybe there'll be time for conversation along the lines of what Dr. Flores represents, so...
Thank you, Mr. Ross. There's no further comment. Take the vote, Ms. Shaki.
Yes, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Fobbe?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Thank you. In addition to the listed discussion items, there is a couple of other discussion items, and I'm going to go to the reinstatement discussion item I had put there. We, I wanna give thanks to board members that have really shouldered the burden of being present at the reinstatements, specifically Ms. Slade and Reverend Mathias, thank you. I know that you have done extra commitment in being present to those. But going forward, I wanna make sure that we even out that responsibility, because it is a significant responsibility for us as board members going forward to be present to these reinstatements. And it may help for us to understand our role and the process. So, this month, we can talk about how we're going to organize that in the work session on Monday. But this month, we actually have three reinstatements in the middle of the month. They take about an hour and a quarter. So, we'll be communicating when those are, and I want all of you to consider, especially those of you who have not been present and done this work, to consider being present to these reinstatements. They need to happen. We need to get these students back in the classes. We were not able to hold them in December because we could not get board members there. So, be aware of that, and we'll have a more thorough discussion on how we can anticipate that commitment and spread it out throughout the year. The second one is about our work session on Monday. Right now, we have a very robust agenda. It's going to serve as an orientation to our new members, but also an orientation to all of us. It is scheduled from 4:30 to 7:00 o'clock. So please make sure you are available for that on Monday. And then the committee appointments and committee meeting schedule, please send to me your request and preference for which committee you would like to serve on. We are going to be doing the Legislative Committee in the work sessions. We are not, it's not going to serve any longer as an ad hoc committee, but we are going to have a Policy Committee. So, the committees to serve on would be the Academic Achievement Committee, the Finance Committee, or the Policy Committee. So please send your request to me. And once the chairs are appointed of the policy and the academic achievement, and we know that Dr. Baker is going to be the chair of the Finance Committee as Treasurer, they will then can speak with the other members of the committee and set the agenda for the year when the schedule will happen. Any questions regarding that?
Just in terms of the January schedule, is there also a retreat scheduled?
Yes, the retreat, this day you scheduled it, Dr. Baker. That is happening.
Yeah, if you just wanna...
Yeah, so...
That is for the record.
Yeah, when is that? I communicated three times about it today, but I forgot.
The 23rd.
Okay.
Do we have a time?
I don't know.
I believe we set it at, it's already been organized. Yeah, 8:30, 1:00, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, public comment for non-agenda items.
No, I don't believe...
Yeah, we need you to fill out a card.
Oh, so we need you to fill out a card?
Okay, we'll get your card real quick.
Yep, you can come on down. Come on, have a seat.
He's sitting in the middle in front of the mic.
Sorry, I didn't see the cards on my way in.
That's all right. There's agendas posted up there with cards there with instructions for making public comment in the future. You can fill it out afterwards. For the purpose of this, can you tell us your name?
My name is Eric John Chapaniak. I'm a trustee of Kennewah Hills Public Schools, and I'm 18 years old. I just graduated from Kennewah Hills in May. I grew up in GRPS. I went to Shawmont Hills on the northwest side, then Blandford School, and then City for middle school. So it really warms my heart to be able to come here as one board member to another. But I really appreciate you guys. Congratulations to the four that ran tough campaigns and were elected at this last November election. But I just wanted to really say that I appreciate what you do, and I think this is the way a board meeting is supposed to go. So, even if you don't have unanimous decisions, you still have conversations, and you're actually teaching the public, which is a lot more effective than just voting on an entire, or in my opinion, than just voting on an entire consent agenda. So I really appreciated the additional discussion, and I just wanted to say congratulations again. I was at one of Ms. Grant's events during the campaign, but I'm really inspired by what I see here, and I wish you all the best, and good luck for the next two years, or four years that you're here.
Thank you, and same to you, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Baker? I'd just like to say how happy I am that the first person who comes to a board meeting to speak to us graduated from Kennewah Hills High School, where I spent 37 years of my life. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Mr. Mahew?
I graduated from Grand Rapids Central High School. Your arms. I'm just here to say thank you for what all you do as well. I know it's a tough job dealing with students and the community and everything like that. We, as the Kent County Black elected officials, we get together, we discuss issues, we work on issues, and we do have, you know, monthly, well, quarterly meetings now. And it's just real nice to see the system work.
And it's just real nice to see the system work. We have a lot of challenges that's getting ready to come before us, both statewide and nationwide, and I just pray that we all can continue to work together, communicate together, to try to further the best thing for our children in our community. Sometimes we bump heads doing it, but as long as we don't cross the line, we're all right. So thank you for doing what you do. It ain't easy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhew.
Thank you.
No other cards for public comment?
No others.
No, Superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Dr. Faub. I'd like to remind everyone of our school expo that is coming up on January 10th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and it will be held at Gerald Aire Ford Academic Center. It's really important for anyone that's interested in coming to the Grand Rapids Public Schools, to any of our programs, to attend the expo. The deadline is January 31st, and we will do our first round of selections, and so we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to get their first or second pick. And we do have waitlist for some of our schools, so just want the public to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
All right, well, thank you. Congratulations, Dr. Faub.
Congratulations.
I want to especially say welcome to our new board members, Ms. Grant and Ms. Lewis, so it's really fantastic to have you guys here. It's nice to know that elected officials from across the county are coming here today to find out how to go through a meeting, so we see, had a city commissioner here earlier, we got a new county commissioner here, we have a new board adjutant member, so I'm glad this is where you can learn how to do government. And, you know, and a former commissioner, Mayhew, here, who I don't remember butting heads with, but anyway, I'm sure, we've certainly learned a lot from your leadership. So anyway, it's great to be here, and looking forward to a great year.
Congratulations to the new officers. Good luck, and lead us well. Nice to be here.
Yeah, just welcome to Ms. Grant and Ms. Lewis. We're so happy that you're a part of the team, and we're looking forward to a great year with you. Just happy new year, everybody.
Thank you.
Ms. Ross?
I just definitely want to reiterate the welcome. Good to have you. Ms. Shatki, good to continue to be comrades with you. Want to emphasize what Superintendent offered about the waitlist in GRPS, come and definitely see about the great things going on. If you know folks, spread the word. It's free to take a look, you know, no charge for admission, so just get people out to check things out, what's going on here in GRPS.
Dr. Flores?
Well, happy new year. You know, we are blessed to live in interesting times. I'm reminded by Mr. Malco Haney, who was my English teacher in middle school. That was his quote, generally, and it belonged to someone else, but he would often remind us in those difficult times, welcome, and, you know, feliz año nuevo.
Well, again, welcome to our new board members. It's going to be, you know, exciting to just have new ideas and engagement. Just want to remind the public, too, that school begins again, and it's that, sort of that mountain that we've climbed, and now we're trying to hopefully steer our kids to finish school well. And so we just want to really encourage parents to get their kids engaged. Kids get engaged, school is exciting, and we look forward to a great new year.
Just want to say thank you for the warm welcomes, and I look forward to learning and working with you all.
And thank you as well for the warm welcome, and I would like also to thank my family, every one of them who is here this evening, and my two granddaughters, Kira and Kayla, who attend Grand Rapids Public Schools. Kira's at the New Museum School and loving every minute of it, and my other little Kayla is at Aberdeen, where I enjoy making popcorn on Fridays for her. So thank you so much for the warm welcome.
Well, I just want to welcome you both as well. It's really exciting, you both bring very different, very unique, very powerful perspectives, and I'm really looking forward to the contributions, and I, just for everybody who's here to support both of them, I want to say thank you. And, Mr. Ross, your sons are getting so big, they've left now, but I saw them back there, but congratulations to you two as well, and so glad that you're still on. I just want to say a thank you to Dr. Baker and his leadership for the last two years. Deeply appreciated. You bring so much to this board, and the county's loss is our gain, so thank you very much. And appreciation to all the educators and administrators, hope they had a restful week off and are ready to do the hard work ahead. Thank you. Meany adjourned.